Calling the order to Village of Riverside regular, regular meeting Board of Trustees.
President Ballerine, you're frozen.
Yes, sir. May I?
President Ballerine, your, your screen is frozen.
Okay, did, did Jessica, can you please call the roll?
Certainly. Trustee Pollock.
Here.
Trustee Marshoska.
Here.
Trustee Galagos.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Hannan.
Here.
President Ballerine.
Here.
Attorney Morris.
Michael, if you would mind unmuting and give us, to go through the Zoom procedures, please.
Michael, you're not coming in.
You picked up the same headset he used last night at the planning and zoning meeting?
Michael, do you want to come in my office?
All right, I'm in Karen's office. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
All right, sorry about that. We'll get it resolved. Um, yeah, so due to the ongoing public health emergency consistent with the governor's most recent emergency declaration and various executive orders entered by the governor, as well as recent amendments made to the Open Meetings Act, President Ballerine has determined that it's not advisable to hold in-person meetings at this time. So tonight we will be conducting this meeting electronically. If at any time you have trouble hearing participants, please send a chat or otherwise shout out. And all votes need to be by roll call votes, no voice votes. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. So we'll move on to the president's report. First thing on my agenda is a resolution authorizing the appointment of Ethan Soul as village clerk effective January 6, 2022. If I can have a motion in a second, please.
Motion made.
Motion by Alex, second.
Second.
Second by Ed. Jessica, if you please call the roll.
Certainly. Trustee Pollock.
Hi.
Trustee Marshoska.
Hi.
Trustee Galagos.
Hi.
Trustee Clarity.
Hi.
Trustee Evans.
Hi.
Trustee Hannan.
Hi.
Thank you. I get the honor of swearing in Ethan. So Ethan, if you wouldn't, please stand up and back up a little bit. And raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Ethan Soul.
I, Ethan Soul.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
You solemnly swear that I will protect the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully perform, perform the duties of the Office of Village Clerk for the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Village Clerk for the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard, Ethan.
Thank you.
Second thing on my president's report is I just wanted to highlight December. December was a month that brought some smiles, enthusiasm, compassion, and tears. We're all smiling at the return of the holiday stroll. And as I heard one resident say to a newcomer, if there was two things that you do want to miss in this town, that's the holiday stroll on the Fourth of July weekend. Thanks to the chamber and the Riverside businesses for putting this together. We were enthusiastically waiting for a coffee shop to return to our downtown in December. Sips and sweets owners Kristin and Carla granted that wish. Now they are preparing tasty treats and serving up some wonderful drinks. So please, uh, don't, don't, don't let it be missed. And on the eastern part of town, Cuban Nito Express is scheduled to open on 11922 with the brother team of Miguel and Lucio. They're working around the clock to open the doors. Uh, I got to preview some of their offerings today and it looks fantastic. And they're at 3222 Harlem Avenue. Our compassion was on display when our residents turned out to full of 30-foot trailer to the brim with relief goods to our neighbors in Southern Illinois and Kentucky. Does not matter to our community if you are across the street or across the country. They always step up when help is needed. So I'd like to thank Trustee Galagos and the Riverside Lions Club for spearheading this initiative. Thank you, Alex. December 22nd marked the day we lost the beloved mayor of Westchester, Frank Terry, at the age of 50. Frank was a lifelong resident and business owner in the community. Love for is, is his smile and long and dare enduring dedication to his community. Our condolences go out to his wife Patty and their beautiful daughter Ava. Managers report.
I do not have a report this evening.
Okay, uh, residents comments. Is there anybody in the public that would like to talk about non, non? Okay.
Yes, um, if nobody else has anything, um, I received an email communication from a resident that I wanted to share with the board.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, uh, this is from Donald Spatney. Uh, he is a resident around the Woodside and Kimbark intersection. He wanted to extend his sincerest thanks and the thanks of those in his apartment building to the members of the Public Works team that were responsible for getting, um, some light shading on a newly installed light that was interfering with, um, everyone's sleep. So, um, you know, I talked to manager Francis today and, uh, she said that it was Joe Coombs and Dan Tab at Public Works that deserve, uh, all of the thanks for the, uh, follow-through on the resident complaint, uh, and concerns. And, uh, you know, Mr. Spatney just wanted to, um, you know, express his sincerest thanks.
Thank you, Everdeen. I appreciate that. And thank you, Donna. I'm glad we were able to help you. Um, consent agenda, we have several items on the consent agenda. Ratify the voucher list of bills, December 16th, 2021. Approve the voucher list of bills, January 6th, 2022. Approve the Village Board of Trustee meeting minutes, December 2nd, 2021. Review and file finance, fire, police, and public works, November 21st, monthly minutes. Review and file quarterly purchase order reports. An ordinance to provide for non-participation by the Village of Riverside in certain assessment relief provided by the property tax code for historic buildings and for certain residence structures located within the Riverside Landscape Architectural District. And a resolution authorizing the sale or disposal of personal property owned by the village. At this time, does anybody want any of these things removed? Hearing none. If I can have a motion in a second, please.
Motion made.
Motion by Alex, second.
I'll second.
Second by Kristen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Jessica, if you please call the roll.
Certainly. Trustee Pollock.
Hi.
Trustee Marshoska.
Hi.
Trustee Galagos.
Hi.
Trustee Clarity.
Hi.
Trustee Evans.
Hi.
Trustee Hannan.
Bye.
Okay, we move on to the board, Department Board of Commissioners reports. Tonight we have two of our commissioners, uh, prepared to give their work plan for 2022. We will start with Chairperson Mateo from Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, President Ballerine and trustees. As Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, it's my pleasure to present to the board our work plan for 2022, which has two components. First, we're going to continue the work of the zoning code update steering committee and consultants and evaluate the proposed amendments to our code. As you saw in December, there's over 200 pages of text involved with this, and I'm not going to go through all those. Instead, I'll just highlight some of the more substantive issues we'll tackle. One is the potential creation of a transit-oriented district in the B1 area near the metro station and potential future pace bus stops. We'll address the parking requirements in commercial and multifamily parcels, update the B1 sign ordinance, promote active use spaces in commercial districts, revise building height and bulk use standards, and augment pedestrian and bike-friendly standards. The last significant zoning code update was in 2005. I've been doing some research lately on Riverside's history and discovered in this book, Then and Now, that was put out by the Historic Commission, that Riverside's first zoning code was adopted in 1922. And that was, we were one of the first in Illinois to have a zoning ordinance, and that was in part to protect our, our structures and our public lands. So 100 years later, in 2022, we aim to recommend updates that will modernize our code while protecting our historic landmark status. Our second project is to make recommendations for standards for calculating pervious surfaces, which currently are nowhere in our code. This will include an examination of different materials and whether to prorate calculations based on the ability of water to infiltrate those different materials. This will not only help staff standardize how they make these calculations now and going forward for future staff, but it'll also inform residents who are considering improvements to their property and increase transparency in how we're making these calculations. Anyone interested in the details of this work plan can download this meeting's agenda from the website and go to page 111. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chairperson Mateo. Any questions from the trustees? One thing that I would like to ask you to take a look at is I know a couple of other communities have, um, made requests, and I think we have made requests that, uh, downspouts need to be disconnected from the sewer system. I think that goes with your, with your impervious surface and study on, on how to gauge water. Is that something we? I think that's something we might want to look at, that we no longer ask that that be a, uh, request, but rather, uh, part of our zoning, that, that we do not allow that anymore. That's, you know, I think something you look at, I think La Grange, La Grange or La Grange Park does that, so.
And Brookfield as well. Um, if we were to require that in Riverside, we would make exemptions for areas where the sewers separated.
Right, like First Division, right? That's the only area that's, that has that correct.
It's my knowledge.
Good. Thank you, Jill. I appreciate you putting this together.
One more quick thing. Um, I know Ashley and I had discussed, um, the Metropolitan Mayor's Council has, um, published a chart of, you know, different improvements that can be made to zoning codes, uh, with an eye to, um, you know, combating, uh, climate change. And I didn't, I was just wondering if certain of those, uh, recommendations could be considered, um, as part of the work plan for this coming year to just analyze whether, um, those recommendations of the Mayor's Council would be, uh, applicable or feasible for Riverside.
Well, I wouldn't add it to the work plan, but the, these are issues that we can discuss as we go through the year. It wouldn't necessarily take up as much time.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jill, thank you very much for the work, uh, you and your commission, your, your, your commission does. It's very important and, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, secondly, we have Chairperson Lisa Lambros from the LAC. Lisa, are you, here you are.
I am.
Please, the floor is yours.
Okay, very good. Well, I think all of you received a link from Lorenzo from RV TV on, um, Tuesday evening for our, uh, our video that is now ready to, to roll and be, uh, sent out, uh, to our residents. Um, I, I will say this, it was a labor of love. Um, I also, they asked Kathy Maloney to be on, uh, the Chair Emeritus for the LAC. It was really a, um, I, I'm, I'm going to put some words in her mouth. It was a, a very much a special project for her. So I really appreciate the fact that she got us over the finish line with this. And it's really to promote our history and legacy here in Riverside. We're, we're lucky that we have such a wonderful history and legacy. And it is going to help us kick off basically educating a new residents. I know myself, I live on Maplewood. And just on one leg of Maplewood, we have four new families that are not from the area. So they're, they're already, I've already been talking plants to them. So it's really kind of an exciting thing. And, and I think the video really covers a lot of questions that you have if you move into Riverside, like setbacks. You know, Dan does a great job of understanding right away and what that means. Um, also, we need to do a better job of promoting some of the things that we've done while, uh, under Kathy's, uh, leadership, which was a tree viewer to understand, you know, the trees that are in our, our neighborhoods and actually our landscaping in a landmark village, uh, which actually gives you plant material, native plant material to be able to plant. Did everyone get a chance to see the video at all?
Yes, it was very, very well done. And it's got a lot of, a lot of hits on the Facebook page also. So it's already, it's already out there.
Good, good. We did do a small promotion, uh, video. I don't know if RV TV was going to be able to put that up.
Would you like me to play it now?
Yes, please.
Frederick Law Olmsted is known as the father of American landscape architecture. And many homeowners, even experienced gardeners, find it useful to have a design plan for their yard. It is the landscape, acres of public greenery, that is central to Riverside's unique design.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. It, it actually ends up landing on a perfect year for almost 200. So we will be promoting it a great deal, uh, nationwide as well. So hopefully bring some more people into our village to see how wonderful it is. Kathy, what would you like to say on the video and the process?
Lisa, I think you've covered it, uh, just beautifully. Um, and, and I want to thank you for inviting me here and thank all the trustees and village staff for helping put this together. Did try very hard. Um, it really took two years during the course of the pandemic, uh, to get this done. And I just reviewed while I was searching for something, uh, this week about the video. I pulled a search up of my emails and found 647 emails just related to this video in the past year. And I'm, I'm sure that, you know, everybody else who worked on this had a similar inbox full of it. So we hope that it's, you know, it's a 23-minute video, uh, which people aren't just going to sit there and, uh, you know, it's not a TikTok, it's not a Twitter, it's more a reference video. And, uh, so as Lisa says, you know, particularly for newcomers, if there's some electronic welcome package that goes out to newcomers, uh, a link to this as well as, you know, a pertinent, uh, might be useful. And, and thank you again. And thanks to Lisa for, uh, bringing it past the finish line.
Oh, thank you, Kathy, for all the work you did on that and, and Lisa for all the work and all the, the work LAC did and, and Riverside TV. Um, I, you know, there's a lot of, there was a lot of work to try to put, uh, pictures with, uh, with, with voice and, and without having video. And it's, um, I, I, it came out much, much, much better than, than I would have ever imagined. So it was, it was really good. And it will have a lot of, a lot of impact for many, many years. Um, because it's, it was done well. So thank you. Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Lisa? Would you like to share with us?
No, we have not finalized. Uh, we had put together back in October, kind of a, our, our list, a proposed list, but because we've had so many changes, um, we are fine tuning that. We had a very long LAC meeting on Tuesday. I promised I wouldn't make it any longer the next time. But I think we've honed in on what we're going to actually get accomplished this year. So I'm looking forward to being able to publish that on, uh, in February.
Great.
And, and great, uh, new commissioners that are really putting, they're jumping in hands and feet, and I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Thank you for everything you all do. Appreciate it. And, and you can see that video on Riverside TV's website. It's, it's on the, uh, the village's website and you can get it off of the YouTube, Riverside TV's YouTube page. So there's, and, and Riverside TV will probably put it in their, their, their rotation for playing on the channels too.
Great.
So more than, more than, more opportunities to see it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for your support.
Okay, we move on to pending business, which we do not have any tonight. Um, we have new business. PZ 21 dash oh four, 2710 South Harlem, special use and variations to consider an applicant, application from applicant. 2720, 2720 Harlem LLC, Lot Normati, Dr. Normati is here, I see. For a special use permit, allow for parking lot as a primary use of 2710 Harlem Avenue in a B1C zoning district. And certain variations related to buffer yards, landscaping, and designs are also sought. If Ashley and Francisco, if you can walk us through this, please.
Thank you, President Ballerine. Um, should I start, Ashley?
Uh, I'll just preface with a quick introduction to the project. Um, we were approached by, uh, the petitioner earlier this fall or late last year about, uh, um, essentially building a parking lot on the address at 2710 South Harlem. Their request to use a, a lot in the B1C district requires a special use permit, uh, to allow it as a principal use. And so it was required to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for, uh, seeking that, that special use permission. So in, in looking at the proposed plan, both the, the very first initial plan as well as the most recent, uh, site plan provided with the concept of what this lot would look like, uh, it was discovered that there would be several variations that would be required in order to accommodate the appropriate parking on this particular lot. And so, um, we held a meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission on December 20th. Uh, we opened the public hearing on that date, but didn't hear any testimony. It was continued to the January 5th meeting held last night by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, there was additional noticing requirements that had, um, required us to postpone any comments on that. But at that meeting, we had the opportunity to review a site plan provided by the petitioner. And so, uh, that initial site plan, it was provided in your pocket. Uh, it's similar in nature to what is before you today. Um, the site plan is intended to be an illustration of the, of the use of the property. So the petitioner also owns the lot to the south of this property. It's, uh, 2720 South Harlem. There's an existing shopping center in that same zoning district. And rather than separate the two units of, or two lots into their own, uh, I, I guess, having one parking lot and then a second parking lot, uh, there was potential interest from the petitioner in, uh, it's essentially connecting the lot or allowing a shared parking between one lot and 2710. And doing so would allow expanded parking opportunities. So, uh, by, by keeping one lot separate, the 2710, uh, that parking separate, they, they gained parking ability by showing a combined site plan. Uh, this combined site plan came before the Planning and Zoning Commission, both on December 20th. Uh, they discussed it and made recommendations. So the site plan you see today, and we'll walk through what that looks like. So you have a concept of, of what this issue is and what the applicable variations are. Francisco, go over that. Um, in doing so, the Plan Commission, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, recommended several suggestions or modifications to that plan to improve upon it. Uh, the, the petitioner did make those revisions and changes and brought it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, last evening, the site plan was approved by a six to zero vote. And I'll also, after Francisco shows the, the plan that you'll be looking at with the specific variations, I'll walk through the discussion, um, the finding of fact by the Planning and Zoning Commission, as they saw it last night regarding the special use and the variations that apply to the lot at 2710 South Harlem. So, and hopefully that served as a, a quick introduction about the process up to this point. And, uh, I'll let maybe project the, uh, the plan. We believe Director Johns has that. Otherwise, uh, Francisco also has that to, to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Um, okay, so, um, the petitioner is seeking, uh, two variances for this property. The first one being the drive aisle, um, that is, um, so it's a 2710 lot and it is on this site plan that's, that's shown on the screen. It would be this, the, the middle portion between the, the 2704 property and the 2720 property. It is proposed to, to be a two-way drive aisle, um, for these parking spaces. Um, so ordinance dictates that that aisle has to be 24 feet in width. Currently, as the, the plan states, it would be 23 feet in width. So they are seeking a variation for that, um, that difference of, of a foot. Ordinance also dictates that, um, their landscape buffering, there, there needs to be some sort of buffering, um, on, on a parking lot. In this case, the, the landscaping will be the stretch that fronts Harlem Avenue. So the ordinance states that it requires the, the buffering to be 10 feet in width. The plans currently show it as being eight feet, 10 inches in width. So they would, um, are seeking a variance from, um, from that, for that, I believe it's a 14-inch difference. To, to have that buffering there. In the, uh, there is a, an existing curb, uh, cut there that's currently blocked off by some trash cans. And the, the plan also indicates that that would be, um, an exit to better kind of direct traffic in the, in the parking lot, um, to make it a little bit easier for anybody that's accessing it and exiting instead of having only one exit, which is the, which is what is currently there on the south, uh, southwest corner near Long Common in Harlem. Um, this way there are two exits. There is also in addition of the, these two spaces on this far southeast corner. So that would close off the current entrance from Long Common, adds a few spaces, uh, there as well, whilst also keeping the spaces on, on Long Common there on the south, the far south side of the property. Think, so those are, those are the two big variables. Those are the two variances, the landscape buffering, um, requirement and the, um, the drive aisle width that is, uh, proposed as being a two-way drive aisle.
Um, when you say two ways, is that where I'm seeing where, does it say entrance only? That's going to be two-way? Is that what, is that?
So, so it is, so it's the, the drive aisle that's, um, facing that. So, so it is, so it's the, the drive aisle that's, um, face that, that I guess faces the alley. Um, so it's to the, to the north of the existing building if we were to flip the, the survey. Wish I had that, wish I had a pointer. Um, so it's the, uh, where is it? So I, if, I don't, there's a, there's an indication down at the, in the, about the middle of the survey that, that shows.
There, there you go. Okay.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so this would be the drive aisle there in the middle. Um, that is, um, required to be twenty-four feet, but, um, is gonna be twenty-three feet.
Okay. Okay, um. Dr. Normati, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Um, no, I think, um, I think they went over most everything, you know, uh, I just wanted to mention that this current site plan that's before you guys is the result of multiple revisions and feedback from the zoning and planning commission. Um, obviously, the, the, um, goal is to maximize the number of parking spaces available, um, uh, because that, that, that's what would benefit the businesses the most. Uh, um, and then we went back and took into consideration a lot of the recommendations that the zoning and planning commission had made as far as adding more green space and landscaping, um, as well as adding bike racks, which we did. Um, so the site that you guys have before you is, um, after incorporating a lot of, um, suggestion and feedback from the village and, uh, minimize, reducing some of the parking that, um, you know, could have been added on there to, to make sure that we take aesthetics and, and flow and things like that into account. So, um, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Dr. Normati. Uh, trustees, do we have any questions for, uh, Ashley or Francisco? Yes, Mr. Hannan.
Uh, Joe, thanks. Um, just my, uh, old age eyesight. Uh, looking back on the site plan, well, first of all, just want to preface, um, watched the hearing last night and, and just want to thank, uh, Zone Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, they did a great job managing the process. Dr. Normati, thank you for taking their suggestions and recommendations and, and, and working with them. It was truly appreciated. Um, you know, with that, uh, at the west end of, of what's gonna be the parking lot, um, there's some writing at the bottom and then, so, uh, just want to get some clarification on if there's gonna be alley access, um, on, on the west side of, of, of the parking lot, or is that gonna be a fence?
Says a six-foot tall cedar decorative fence.
Okay, so is there?
Stretching that fifty-foot strip.
Got it. So is there access between, um, the lot to the north to this new proposed? Lot?
No, no direct access.
Okay, is, uh, my understanding was that there was going to be, this lot was gonna provide some prop, uh, parking, uh, to the business of the north as well and just trying to get my arms around, you know, where that's reflected on this map or, or where that came into play.
It will. They're gonna have designated parking spaces, um, probably to the north, uh, east side of that parking lot. So probably the five, five spots, five or six spots along, um, kind of the landscaped area that they have on their property at the twenty-seven oh four that would allow for, you know, easy access to that, their property.
So that dotted line, that red dotted line that goes through that, that's not a fence. That's, that's, it can, it's an easy walkable between the two properties.
Okay, that's helpful.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? If not, if I can have a second and a motion?
I'll second.
Motion made by, uh, Miss Heaven, second?
No, I have a comment. I'm sorry. I wasn't making a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I was on you. I'm sorry. Um, I do have a question. Why was parking between the two properties separated?
Which two properties are you talking about?
The two Harlem properties.
Well, there's three.
That are next to each other.
Well, there's three properties next to each other. You're talking about between twenty-seven ten and twenty-seven twenty or twenty-seven ten and twenty-seven oh four?
Oh, four.
Two different owners.
No, I'm sorry. I'm talking about the Title Max Building and the little strip mall where the dentist is.
Title Max Building is twenty-seven oh four and the strip mall is twenty-seven twenty. We're, we're in between now.
Right, so, right. So what I wanted to know is, how come they can't drive? Why aren't they connected? So I, I understand that they're gonna have, is the twenty-seven oh four gonna have the five parking spaces in the dentist parking lot?
The, i- in the twenty-seven ten parking lot, yes.
So why are they separated if, like, wouldn't it be more sense for them to be connected? I'm trying to understa- I know that it was connected at one point, so why was it separated?
It, it was never connected. The, the old plan from twelve twenty, it was never connected. It just didn't show the twenty-seven oh four island in there. It's never been connected. Um, and you're gonna have, you have two different owners here. You have an owner of twenty-seven oh four and an owner of twenty-seven ten and owner of twenty-seven twenty. So it's two different owners. I, I mean, I think that's probably the biggest reason is you have ownership issues. I mean, if I, if I personally, if I owned, um, twenty-seven twenty, I don't know if I'd want people from twenty-seven oh four driving through my parking lot to, to exit. Um, I have to worry about my, you know, my customers, so I would rather them egress, uh, enter and egress off of their own property personally, but. Anybody else? I mean, go ahead.
Also, also, we'd end up losing significant parking on both sides if we were to, to do that, which would defeat the whole purpose.
Yeah, I remember that you had mentioned that last night.
Yeah, because we'd lose five parking spots on the twenty-seven oh four property and then five on the new proposed lot, so it would really defeat the whole purpose. We're only gaining fifteen additional parking spaces.
Um, hold on, um, Alex, I gotta go in order here, sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna mention that, you know, people can park in a twenty-seven ten parking lot and walk over. There's nothing that bear, that's a barrier between the the, the building space and the parking lot. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so that makes a lot of different customers.
Megan?
Right, I mean, as I understand it, uh, Dr. Normati will maintain ownership of two of the parcels and not the third. And it seems to me that it is completely within the owner's purview if he chooses to lease out those spots to the adjacent buil- building or if not, but that there's not, you know, I, I'm not sure it's the purview of our board to, to weigh in on, on that element of the site plan. My understanding is that we're to weigh in on the, the, what I perceive to be a pretty small request here for twelve inches and fourteen inches.
Doug, please.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, several comments. Um, first a question for staff, um, that just occurred to me. Uh, if he's leasing five spaces to an adjacent business, does he have five spaces to spare and still be in compliance with our zoning parking requirement? Then I have some follow-up comments.
Could you please rephrase that maybe, trustee Pollock? It just, what, what are you, um, that la- latter part of what your question is?
So he's showing thirty-six, I guess, I guess the question really is, what is required parking for the twenty-seven twenty building? He's got thirty-six shown. He's saying that he really only has thirty-one because he's leasing five to someone else. Is thirty-one enough parking to meet our code? I suspect it is, but I just want to be certain.
Francisco can, can correct me, or maybe you immediately know that, is it that we don't have a minimum number of parking spaces required in B one?
Correct, yeah. The, the twenty-seven bill, twenty-seven twenty building doesn't meet that threshold where, uh, minimum, uh, parking spot is.
So, so there is no required parking for the, this building. Okay, that, that, I forgot about that. Thank you.
Hmm.
Um, so then, comment-wise, a- as, as, as Joe knows and, and some others know, I've uh, been very concerned about circulation on this property and how, uh, people, uh, access the property and circulate within the property. And I, I've been, uh, spending a lot of time trying to figure out how that might be improved. I mean, I know that what's proposed is, doesn't make it any worse than it already is, but I, I just feel like we have an obligation to look and see if there's a way we can make it better. And initially, and I still think that, uh, across access to twenty-seven oh four, uh, would be desirable. And of course, it would require, uh, consent of, of, uh, of the property owner. And by the way, it is still one owner of all three property, or two of the properties, and we own the middle property. At least as of now, we're, have contract to sell our property. And I understand that Dr. Normati has a contract to sell twenty-seven oh four, but currently it's, uh, the village and Dr. Normati that owns the property. But that's beside the point. So anyway, I've looked really hard at how you can improve circulation. And, uh, I came up with some conditions that I'd like to suggest. Uh, primarily, one related to circulation, others, uh, related to other aspects, which I can address separately, but, um, one of the things I thought we, you know, initially I thought, uh, uh, a cross-access directly from one private property to the other was desirable, but it just occurred to me, quite honestly, just as we were speaking here tonight, that if the alley access is opened up, which I strongly believe should be, because otherwise you've got a dead-end row of parking and you've got two parallel parking spaces that are extremely difficult to access and, and, and to, to exit. Uh, I really believe that, that alley access should be opened up. And if you did that, and if you si- simply put, a, uh, that alley is sixteen feet wide, and if you put a four to eight foot, if you made that first row of parking, uh, pushed it to the east a little bit to make that alley essentially a twenty-two or twenty-four foot alley, you'd have cross-access uh, between the two properties. So if someone, you know, my concern is, you know, the, the, the proposed dispensary, as I already said, they need, they want five more spaces. I appreciate that Dr. Normati is able to, to accommodate that. But if someone pulls into the, um, the, uh, twenty-seven oh four property and there's no parking, now they gotta go back onto Harlem, uh, to get to a parking space. And they shouldn't need to do that. That's a safety issue. Uh, because it just adds one more exit, one more conflict of traffic. So I think the cross-access issue can easily be remedied by simply opening up that access to the alley. Um, and it wouldn't require, uh, any consents from, from property owners other than the village. And, uh, and that would allow that circulation, uh, to occur uh, without encouraging it, because people would, wouldn't do it unless they, they, there, there was reason to. Um, so that's where I'm at with the, the access. And I, I also think that uh, the two curb cuts on, uh, Harlem for the twenty-seven ten and the twenty-seven tw- twenty property, one is marked as exit only, but it's not designed as exit only. Um, and I can appreciate, uh, that, uh, making that, uh, exit or, you know, one way is, is desirable, but it has to be designed so people can't cheat on it. Because i- if it's not, it doesn't matter how many signs you put up. If, if, if the curb isn't redesigned, people are gonna exit and enter there. So I'd like to suggest that, that we have our engineer look at that and designate one of those two entrances as an e- entrance and one of the two as an exit. Uh, and to, uh, correspondingly design the curb work so that i- it's, i- it's clear that that's what it is. Um, so those are my comments on access and circulation. I have other comments that, but if we want to address that first, I'd be glad to hold off, or if you'd like me to proceed with the other comments, I can do that too.
I think you just, I, I, if nobody minds, I think we should just let Doug finish what is, what your thoughts are.
Sure. So there's a lot of details on the plan that I'd like to see, uh, addressed and, and, and be conditions of this approval. Um, and they include that, you know, I think a barrier curb needs to be provided between the landscaping and the, um, and the parking rather than wheel stops. Um, wheel stops tend to get damaged, uh, by snowplows and, uh, and they're hard to maintain. They're, they're not very attractive. Uh, and a curbing would, would, uh, be, uh, much, is a much better way to protect, uh, the edge of the pavement and to protect the adjacent landscaping. Uh, so I'd like to see curbing, uh, along the, uh, what would be the east property line uh, between landscaping and the, um, and the, uh, and the parking as well as along the north property line uh, between, uh, the edge of the property and the adjacent property to the north. Uh, um, uh, and, and also extended around, uh, to, to protect the south or the, uh, east end of that parking row. Likewise, yeah, at the, at the south, um, what would be the southeast corner of the property where the proposed bike racks are, I'd like to see those spaces separated from the bike rack area by curbing. Um, and, uh, also I'd like, and, and I, I'm more than willing to entertain the idea of the village participating in this. That's to, uh, in order to enhance that corner, I'd like to see those bike racks. At a minimum, they should be protected by curbing. Um, and I, I'd love to see a more decorative, yet functional, uh, surface area like per- permeable pavers or something, uh, to make that a feature, to make that, that an attractive feature in our gateway. Um.
Doug, can it, yeah, are you, are you proposing that, um, we use the same bike racks as we use in the, uh, CBD?
Yes.
Uh, and that we, and we put pavers underneath that area? And that we would reimburse Dr. Normati from our business tax to the difference between, um, just cement and a bike rack and, and the, and improved enhancements?
Yes, yes, because I think that's a, it's a public benefit, uh, that, you know, at this gateway to the village. And, and I want that to be as attractive as possible. The whole reason, as, as the trustees know, the whole reason we bought the property at twenty-seven ten was to, uh, improve that entryway, uh, to the village and, and have, be a player in any development that occurred there. And, uh, and, and that's why we did the business district as well to be able to do those, those types of things. So, so I'm certainly open to that. I don't know if the other trustees are or not, but, um, but, but I would certainly be open to that. Um.
Are you also thinking that when, if you do, um, enhancements to the I dot right-of-way, that that would be on the village's dime also?
Uh, I'm open to discussing that. Um, I mean, certainly there's a public benefit there. I think you could argue because it's improving the access and it is on public right-of-way. If that's what it, uh, took to get a proper design, um, yeah, I'm open to, to, to doing that.
We'd also, I mean, the other problem is we do have another entity that we'd have to deal with and that's Ida.
Right.
Um, which that's, you know, that's, that's like government on steroids. Um, so, uh, it's, that's, you know.
Yeah, I mean, there's other agencies that are gonna be involved in this for sure. I suspect N W R D will have to weigh in. I don't know if they do or not. But, uh, certainly if you, uh, modify those curb cuts, I dot will, uh, you'll need a permit from I dot, but, um, you know, we can, uh, again, I, I'm open to the idea of our engineer, uh, uh, working with the property owner to, to make that happen.
Well, let's, let's start with your first, uh, with your first, I, uh, thought, and that is the removal of the fence. Is there a particular reason why that fence is there?
Yeah, I actually, uh, I thought it would be better not to have that fence. That fence was put into the plan on the recommendation of the meeting from December twentieth, um, by some of the board members then. Um, but I mean, I agree. I think, uh, not having that fence and allowing for, uh, egress would only help.
Am I frozen or are you frozen?
It is cold outside, Bill.
We, we can hear you, Joe.
We can hear you. Yeah, you're good, I think.
Okay, um, so that, that fence was something that was brought to you by, uh, planning and zoning, correct?
Correct. Yeah, if we don't need that fence, I'm perfectly okay with not having that fence and allowing for people to exit through there. That would be preferable.
Um, we have Ms. Mateo from, uh, Chairperson Mateo from Planning. We have Ms. Matteo from Chairperson Matteo from Planning and Zoning. Would you like to weigh in?
Yeah, I believe Assistant Village Manager said that our engineers did look at that and based on safety, recommended or cautioned against allowing access from these lots to the alley. But Ashley, can you add to that or correct me?
Yes, so there was some concern with just the the consistency or increase in in traffic flow going through the alley. Some concerns just with the the current condition of of that area. We also have a a code segment, which and and Attorney Mars can perhaps weigh in on whether this would be required. But there's a buffer yard requirement in the B one district, which states that within a buffer yard, which the the property lot line on that side would would be considered. It abuts a residential district, so that property to the west side across the alley is residential. And and due to that factor, there was this additional layer of screening that was recommended. And so the code reads, within the buffer yard, a visual barrier, a minimum of six feet in height shall be installed, which will consist of an opaque stone or brick wall, solid wood decorative fence, with the finished side facing the adjacent residential property. So I suppose it's to be questioned whether if the fence is removed from the approved site plan or or included in a in a special use property, whether an additional variation would be required.
Michael?
Yeah, I'm pulling up the legal note that we had here, which we wrote fairly broadly because the plan was in flux.
Attorney Mars, it's really hard to hear you.
Yeah, I'm continuing to have microphone problems. Is that any better?
Yes.
No.
No?
Yeah, I'm still having a hard time hearing you.
Okay. I I'm trying to pull up the public hearing notice, and if you give me a minute, I will. But we we did write it broadly with the understanding that there, you know, in order to achieve the overall intent and result, that there may might be additional variations that would be approved, you know, as part of the special use. So I I think we're okay if that's what you guys decide to do without without having to go through a second public hearing.
So for clarification, you're saying that that fence can be removed if the board deems that necessary without causing any further delay, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Megan, please.
All right, just to clarify on that particular point, are we suggesting that we would take the fence down entirely and such that there would be no barrier between the residents and the commercial properties?
There's a fence on the other side of the parking lot, if I'm correct. On the other side of the alley. So there'd be one fence, not right? Am I correct?
Correct. All those residents have fences along the alley.
Okay. Ed, go ahead, please. I'm sorry, Doug. Going down this way.
I I guess my concern, and and I'd love to hear Assistant Village Manager Monroe chime in. You know, i- if we have a a traffic issue coming down that alley, I I have a great concern of that alleyway becoming an alternative thoroughfare to access, you know, this parking lot and the dispensary. I I my understanding is that, you know, we were trying to keep all the traffic on Harlem as opposed to getting cut throughs that are going to use the alley as a backdoor way to get in, you know, starting with this parking lot and then onto the dispensary. So is 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 that? This is Village Manager Monroe. Was that part of the concern from from your report or have I missed the mark?
And I, as far as I am aware, that has been a component of conversations held with the engineer and and other staff. I I don't want to pass it off necessarily, but Manager Francis has been involved in the conversations as well and and some conversations with Public Works as well. Or is there anything that we would be missing or the trustee Hannon is missing in in the concern about traffic flow in that area and as it pertains to that alley?
So as we're looking at over by Berkeley, if you recall, we put up signage. One of the things that we're working with with our village engineer is to do some enhancements. We're trying to figure out where would be best suited to do some sort of bump out so that while vehicles can exit, so residents that live over on Berkeley can exit and then make their way towards Harlem Avenue going east. Those that are coming in off of Harlem Avenue would not be able to access Berkeley because it would be restricted to only exit only but not entrance. However, those that live on Berkeley, if they chose to then go, sorry, I'm trying to think my direction, west, they could do so. It's just we would preclude or limit access traffic onto Berkeley that is trying to travel west from Harlem Avenue. So but we're working on that. We don't have final designs. There's a couple of different challenges with regard to that because we have one resident that has a driveway right in that same area of where the alley is on the south side. And so we're trying to figure out where the best placement of that is. But we will be doing enhancements to mitigate and minimize any type of impact, if not at all eliminate any impact by this additional parking lot going in and the traffic flow for the dispensary and also for Dr. Normati's parcel.
But just a quick clarification, Village Manager. Is the plan to put more traffic down the alley with with this Berkeley addition? I I'm just trying to get a sense of by removing this fence, are we doing something inconsistent with the overall plan? You know, either we're going to put more pressure on that alley or we're not. Right now, with the fence, we're taking pressure off the alley. But if the dispensary plan was to have traffic going down that alley, then, you know, there's there's we're not changing any pressure by eliminating the fences proposed by trustee Pollock.
Right now, the our focus is making sure we limit any type of entry onto Berkeley and Bird, that whole area. As it relates to access to the alley, there was one, the village engineer did point out that his concern was two-way traffic. So for example, you have someone coming out of that parking lot and then you have someone perhaps that's trying to go north as it's if we remove the fencing, trying to go north. And you have another person maybe coming out of the dispensary parking lot, trying to go south to gain access to Long Common, then obviously that becomes problematic. The suggestion that Mr. Galey made was make it one way. That could potentially impact those with garages. There are approximately three garages that back up to that alley. So just so that we understand the potential impact to to those residents. But that could be the solution if we're looking at creating another access point to Long Common would be to make that alley specifically one way. The the challenge is, though, as it is always, is, you know, the enforcement of it. So just to kind of, you know, give fair warning on that one.
Mr. Pollock?
Yeah, I I think there are some options there that would involve perhaps, you know, at the at the north end of the twenty-seven twenty building, where the alley comes to the north end of that building, some type of sign or even a physical barrier that doesn't allow vehicles to go south from there. Do not enter for vehicles heading south or or just maybe even just a complete barrier so that that alley then essentially just functions for the two or three homeowners' garages as their private driveway. It'd be a public alley. But it it has no purpose other than access to those garages. And we could maintain that and not allow any one, any other cars in there. Now, I know what what Dr. Normati is thinking. He's thinking, well, I have dumpsters back there, which is another issue and another concern I had, that I'd like to see those dumpsters screened in some fashion. But perhaps those dumpsters could be moved to a screened location. You'd have to give up a a parking spot or something, but or the dumpsters just stay there as they are now. But essentially, that south half of that alley becomes for the residents only because the north half of the alley doesn't do anything for the residents. It doesn't provide access to anything, I I believe. But if my recollection is correct from being out there earlier in the week. So I think there's options there to control and monitor the traffic so that that it's not a problem. Also, in regards to the fence, and this is kind of a side note, doesn't have anything directly to do with this petition. But I would like to see the village, and I've thought of this in the past. At some point, I'd like to see us as a village work with those property owners to get a uniform fence that provides a better screen for them. I mean, there are some fences there, privately owned fences. They vary and they're not, they they may be six foot. You know, I I would be entertaining an eight-foot fence because they, you know, a screen for them would be essentially would be very beneficial to them. And that's something that I think our business district could could potentially nominate. But again, that that's kind of another matter for another day, perhaps.
I actually, I think most of the things that you're talking about, Doug, is 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 truly a matter, is somewhat a matter for another day and 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 down the road that we can we can direct staff to, you know, make recommendations to to Dr. Normati and and work with them on on the bike racks and the permeable pavers and and the village partnership. But I think tonight, what we have at hand is 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 the special use and the variation. So I think the question is, do we all is, can we have a motion that we can accept the special use and the variation and allow staff to work with Dr. Normati on some of the details that we'd like to see as enhancements?
I I would like to make that motion.
Okay.
May I ask a question? Are we making trustee Pollock's suggestions as a condition? Or is it?
I'm going to address that. I'm going to address that in my motion.
Okay. And I don't know if I want you to make the motion. Dr. Normati, would you would you please?
Can I just 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 to make a comment about the whole fence situation? Most of those parking spaces that are going to be on the twenty-seven ten parcel, the the additional parking that we're adding, most of that is going to be utilized by employees, both of the dispensary and for the nail salon and dental practice. So I don't think you're going to have as big of a problem as as we're we're thinking about in terms of traffic flow, crossing, you know, through the alley and and adding a ton of traffic into that alley. So, you know, if if that helps ease anyone's mind, most of those parking spots are going to be utilized by staff. We're going to be there seven, eight hours a day, you know, maybe leaving for lunch, but that's about it.
Mr. Hannah?
Yeah, i- i- it was the appropriate time. I'd like to make the motion to approve these variations as as approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission without condition.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I I have some thoughts. I found the, you know, I I definitely appreciate everything that Mr. Normati, Dr. Normati has gone through with planning and zoning, the back and forth and working with the village on this. But I do find the issue of circulation and safety and also the point about the curb redesign at the entrance and exit onto Harlem, you know, serious safety issues. So for that reason, rather than an unconditional approval of the variation requests and special use, I would have a conditional approval based on follow-up, you know, satisfactory to the village to have those items addressed. I would also love to see Doug's wish list items addressed. And like Doug, I would agree that with respect to enhancements to the bike rack areas, you know, th- this is a real great opportunity to elevate the quality of the parcel. I mean, you know, like just taking that whole entrance to Riverside and making it functional, making it attractive. And I think I I definitely appreciate the dialogue and the ability to work together on this. And I think we can make it great. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Aberdeen. We have, go ahead. Kristin?
I totally agree with trustee Asgad, Marshall Asgad. Thank you very much for for saying that. I I'm sorry I was not clear earlier. I was really concerned about with the with the maybe connected properties, it creates a safer, a safer space and there's not as much entry and exit onto Harlem, like turning left and then turning left to get back in. There's just it's much, it's a much safer situation. But what I wanted to ask is, could we let trustee Pollock make his motion before? I mean, wasn't he in the middle of making a motion when trustee Hannon made his motion?
Well, we already have a motion on the floor and a second. So we need to, we need to act on that first.
Well, I, President Valering?
Yes.
So we do have a motion and a second, and I understood trustee Marshall Asgad to be proposing an amendment to that motion. Is that correct? Is that what you were doing?
That is correct.
Okay, so if you could kind of repeat what you were proposing and then and then when we have an amendment like that, if if we get a second, then we would address that amendment to the main motion before moving it back to the main motion.
All right, I I would amend the primary motion to be a conditional approval, conditioned upon the village's conditioned upon the site plan addressing the circulation and curb entrance and exit on onto Harlem in a satisfactory manner prior to the next planning and zoning meeting.
Do you know that that, I'm I'm sorry, but do you know that 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 amendment means that this has then go in front of IDOT?
Can I can I just ask a procedural question? And I apologize, I don't have my copy of Robert's rules. But if we take
We have Michael here.
If we take up trustee Marshall Asgad's revised motion, if we if we were to vote against that, do we have the opportunity to restate the prior motion?
I, i- if if her if her amendment is not approved, then the main motion, then we're back to the main motion, which is unconditional approval. The motioner could withdraw that or somebody could propose a different amendment if you want.
So do we have to have a roll call on Aberdeen's conditions?
If if there is a second, yes.
There's a second. Okay.
So do we have a Before we get a second, can, do we have a timetable on if if this motion is approved as proposed by Aberdeen of timetable on getting approval of IDOT? My understanding that this is anywhere between two or three years to never on on working with IDOT. So this basically adopting Aberdeen's motion, you know, kills this plan. Unless I'm, someone tells me differently.
So do we have a, do we have a second to Aberdeen's motion? Okay, hearing
I'd actually like clarification on Ed's question as well with respect to the timing on. I I mean, does this trigger IDOT's?
Yes, because we would be, Michael, we would be doing work on IDOT's right of way, correct?
Doug?
Yeah, I I I will second the the motion, but I want to clarify that I would rather spell out the conditions in a slightly different manner. And it was, it was, so. So i- if, if. If trustee Marsh Asgad wants to keep her motion on the, for an amendment on the table, that's fine. I'll second it hesitantly, but. If she wants to withdraw it, I'll make a different. Motion for amendment that I think may provide a little more clarity.
I would be happy to withdraw that amendment. If we can get a solution that does not trigger. The IDOT involvement that would hold up a process that has been, you know, worked on by so many here. So I, I would like to see this actually happen. So I'm happy to withdraw.
Okay, I will make a motion to amend the motion on the table. And before I do that. You know, I. Yeah. Yeah, I think it's unfair to say, with all due respect, Ed, it's unfair to say that that adds two years to the project. I've done plenty. Of projects where IDOT permits are required. And if the, if we use our engineer, which I'm happy to, to, to suggest we do. And they present proper plans. It's not a, it's, it's not the nightmare that people seem to make it out to be. It's when you don't.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but do you have a sense of timing of that? I mean, I've done with IDOT professionally and it's been a multi-year process. So if you have a different experience, I would love to hear it.
Yeah, I have a different experience. I mean, I, getting IDOT permits is pretty routine for most new development. And it typically, it can be done concurrent with the architectural plan review and the. And the zoning and, and, and engineering plan review. That is if you hire an engineer, which should have been done in the first place here. And you, you do proper plans and, and I, like I said, I would. Be glad to have the village spearhead that part of the process.
Doug, what, what is your, what is your motion?
My motion is to amend the, the motion on the table.
I'm sorry, Jessica?
Just for frame of reference, and Director Cab is actually still on Zoom. Related to IDOT. So if the board recalls, a few years ago, we embarked on the journey of trying to get Parkview closed permanently. And we're still working on that. So I think it's been. Two and a half, almost three years and we haven't. IDOT has not been very responsive in the last year, but that could be due to staffing shortages. So I just, since the question was asked for a frame of reference, I just wanted to provide that.
And we are looking at closing on this property on February 4th. So we're, we're. More, less than, less than a month away. But go ahead, Doug, if you want to finish your motion.
Yeah, he's not likely to have a permit from the village before it closes. That, that. There's, you know, he's still got to get a permit from the village. He's still got to. Hire an engineer to do engineering plans to be able to get a permit from the village. He may very well likely have to go to MWRD to get a permit. So. You know, that closing date is not a deadline in terms of getting building permits. He'll, he'll get his zoning approval from us, from the village and. He'll close and then he'll probably, you know, get his building permits. So, but anyway.
What is your, what is your?
So my motion is to amend it. Amend the motion on the table to. One, that. Either that, that curb cuts be modified, curb cuts on. On Harlem Avenue be modified. So that. That one is ingress and one is egress, that they, they be designed accordingly. And that the village would. Handle that part of the permit as a public improvement or quasi-public improvement. And it would not hold up. Any permits for the, on the private property side of the development. Two, that a barrier curb shall be provided between the green strip. And the parking located adjacent to the east lot line. These parking spaces shall not include wheel stops. Three, a minimum three-foot landscaping strip shall be provided adjacent to the. East lot line and the two parking spaces at the southeast corner of the property. Barrier curb shall be provided at the perimeter of the landscaping and pavement. That's consistent with the plan. It's basically adding barrier curb. The bike rack area shall be separated from the parking by curbing and the surface. Area shall be permeable pavers of similar decorative and functional material. And the village shall. How do I want to word that? The village shall. Participate in any extra cost due to the use of permeable pavers. And. Four, a barrier curb shall be provided along the north lot line and parking spaces. Located one to two feet from the north lot line. Although this reduces, I'm sorry, that's unnecessary. The barrier curb shall be designed to be extended. Nevermind, just a barrier curb shall be provided on the north lot line, one to two feet from the lot line. To separate those, that row of parking from, from the adjacent property. And five, access to the alley from the parking spaces on the north side of the building shall be maintained. And the. Parking space, the four feet addition to the alley shall be provided so that. Adjacent to that parking row. So that the essential width of that alley at that. One particular point is 20 feet to allow. Cars to, to go through there. And next, the petitioner shall. Sorry, no, nevermind that. If, finally, the revised site plan shall be submitted for staff, to staff. For final approval and shall be prepared by civil engineer based on the current survey.
Joe? Joe?
Yes, Mr. Gallegos.
I'm going to suggest that we separate each of those and take consensus on each member of the board on how they feel. I think that'd be appropriate since we're throwing so many amendments to this motion.
Michael, help me here.
So. I, trustee Gallegos has made a suggestion. It's really directed at trustee Pollock. You know, if, if trustee Pollock is proposing that they all be done in one motion and he gets a second, then we should vote on it. If he's willing to take them, his proposed amendments as seven separate amendments that can be considered by the board. That's fine too.
So do we have a sec? Yes, Mr. Hannon?
I just would like some clarification in Mr. Pollock's various amendments. On i- if he's proposing things to be funded by the village. If we could get. Some information on what that budget is before we start spending money. Through this process that seems to be getting vetted on the fly.
I think the only thing you're asking to be funded through the village is the pavers and the, and the. Oh, you're also talking about the, the curb cuts. Do, do we have a second to Mr. Pollock's?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we call the roll on that? To see if we have a quorum or a. It passes?
That, that's correct. You call the roll to see if the main motion will be amended with trustee Pollock's additions.
Okay, Jessica, would you please call the roll?
Just for clarification for the minutes, that's all the items in their entirety, correct, Michael?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Pollock. Trustee Marsh Asgad.
Hi.
Trustee Gallegos.
Nay.
Trustee Clarity.
Nay.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Hannon.
No.
Am I correct that I have to ask President Ballerine?
Yes.
President Ballerine?
No. So motion does not pass. We go to the original motion by Mr. Hannon. And we had a second by Megan. Jessica, if you'd please call the roll.
Trustee Pollock.
I believe that was a no, correct?
Sorry, no, I'm sorry, I was muted. That, that was a no.
Trustee Marsh Asgad.
No.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
No.
Trustee Hannon.
Aye.
President Ballerine.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Good conversation and I think Doug has some very good. Recommendations and I think staff could, could work with Dr. Normati and. See if we can get some of those, those items completed that wouldn't hold things up and, and some enhancements. And then we can discuss at a later time the costs and if the board wants to participate with the business district money. So we move on.
President Ballerine, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. Dr. Normati had his hand up.
I'm sorry, Dr. Roy, go ahead.
One, one quick clarification about the fence. Can I remove that fence or? Let me keep the fence.
I think we, your commotion was as the planning and zoning commission without exceptions, correct, Ed?
That's right. Yeah, it's as approved by planning and zoning.
So that the fence was approved by the planning and zoning, so the fence would have to stay.
Okay, thank you.
Am I correct? Michael?
Yeah, you're correct. I mean, if, if Dr. Normati wants to propose adjustments to the site plan, including the removal of the fence. He, he's welcome to do what's called an adjustment to the site plan and. Propose that to PZC and they, they can take it up again.
No. Okay. So we move on to trustee reports and communications. Do we have any trustee reports tonight?
I, I have a public item of information.
Please.
Okay. All right. The Olmstead Society's annual meeting will be held Friday, January 21st at 7:00 PM in Township Hall. Unless we receive notice to the contrary. Immediately following that annual meeting. The. Presentation is a. Person who was born and raised in Riverside. Dr. Spencer Corfright. Who is now a professor of biology at Indiana University Northwest. He will be speaking on the topic of the gem of Chicago wilderness, ecology and restoration. Of the greatest ecological area in the United States. So it, it looks to be a very interesting presentation. On the various habitats that are all present in a very condensed. Geographical area, including dunes, swale, oak, savanna, prairie, forest and fen. So please join us 7:00 PM on January 21st for that exciting event.
Thank you Aberdeen. Anyone else, please? Hearing none. Before we adjourn, I'll turn it over to Attorney Morris to complete the requirements for this meeting remotely.
I, I don't have anything further. I, I said my piece at the beginning. We're good to go.
Okay, the board has no need for an executive section, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by trustee Gallegos, second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Evans. Manager Francis, if you could please call the roll.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Asgad.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
And trustee Hannon.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I, you know, I appreciate everyone's comments tonight. It's always good to have. Good back and forth. It makes us all better trustees. So I appreciate it. With that. Good night. We will see you in. February and my hope is that we will see you all in person. So. Back on wood.